You're watching WS TV Digital Media.
Of course, I ran for a period of time at a thrift shop. It was about ready to hear. Yeah, it was a charity thrift shop.
Good afternoon. I'd call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to September 13, 2018, meeting in City/County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance due to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on TV 13. It will be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning and again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. The first order of business today is the consent agenda. These are items for which the petitioners requesting withdrawal or continuance, items for which the staff has recommended approval, and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one is permitted to speak unless a planning board member asks a question. Items under Section B of our agenda require final action by either the city council or county commissioners. As such, votes taken today will go to those bodies for their consideration as they review these requests. If you are addressing the board today, before you begin your comments, we'll need your name, address, and zip code for the record. First order of business, approval of the minutes of the August 13 meeting. Any additions or corrections?
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb. Second. Mr. Leake, in discussion. All in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Now calling Aaron King for consent agenda.
All right. First item is Item B1, zoning docket W-3376. This is a request to rezone about three tenths of an acre from RS9 to residential, single-family, quadriplex, special-use zoning. And you can see the subject property there in yellow. It's on the south side of Polo Road, just west of Indiana Avenue. You can see the zoning pattern in the area is primarily RS9 zoning, GI there to the east, and some MH zoning there to the west. As this is a special use request, the site plan has been submitted with this. And just to walk through it, it really just depicts the existing structure that you see there. Access from Polo Road there to the side of the building coming around back. As far as new improvements to the property, the four new parking spaces to the rear of the structure, and then buffer yards in the perimeter of the structure. Our staff has reviewed this. The area plan does recommend single-family residential for the site, zero to eight dwelling units per acre. Staff feels this RSQS is a reasonable request, given its location, the existing structure that's on the site. So with that, staff would recommend approval of this request.
No one has signed up. Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Said no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Can I have a motion, Mr. Lamb? Second. Yeah, well, let me get a motion of Mr. Lamb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Leake. Okay. Mr. Bryan?
Help me understand why this just isn't a zoning ZBA decision here, in terms of the number of units in this particular thing. I mean, it looked to me like it had been in multiple use prior to this coming to us.
One issue is we don't have documented records that this was ever on file as a duplex. While it appears that way, certainly from the street, we can't say with confidence. That doesn't mean it wasn't converted at some point, but we don't have non-conforming files or any records on site that this was ever converted to a duplex. So that's why in the staff report it's referenced as a single-family structure that appears to be a duplex.
Okay. Any other comments? A motion for approval, those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B2, zoning docket W-3380. And this is a request to rezone about one and a half acres from mixed-use, special-use zoning to the same. And really, the change there is the addition of the use storage services retail. And you can see the subject property there in yellow. It's on South Stratford Road, just north of Somerset Drive. This is within a Hillcrest mixed-use development. So going back to the early days of Hillcrest, the idea was that the western portion of the site was a mixture of residential uses, and this portion up closer to Stratford and Somerset would be a mixture of retail and office uses. What has been built to date, if you kind of walk through with a mouse, is the police substation there on the corner. You've got the urgent care facility just to the east of the site, and then you've got the Health South Rehabilitation Hospital that's under construction just to the north of the site. It hasn't quite panned out for the mixture of resident, of retail, and office uses as intended. This is the site plan that was submitted with the request. You can see it's a three-story self-storage building there. It occupies the majority of the lot. Access is from Winter Haven Lane with no access to Stratford Road or to Somerset Drive. I don't have the elevations scanned in, but what helped staff get comfortable with this is the attractive elevations that were submitted with this request. It's not your standard metal storage building. This is an attractive building, and staff felt this was a reasonable request there. You do see the revisions to the conditions in the report. Some new conditions have been added, and some existing conditions have been modified. Whilst storage services retail is not an ideal neighborhood serving use, given the development patterns within Hillcrest, the surrounding land uses, staff felt this was a reasonable request, and we do recommend approval of this rezoning.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? I declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Lamb. Second. Mr. Grubbs, in discussion.
Yeah, you know, this, that Hillcrest redevelopment was a big issue for the community. This is neither retail. People are not going to walk their boxes and their furniture over here. This is not walkable. This isn't part of the plan that the developers came to us and said in Winston-Salem. And I just, I don't want to support a storage building being in such a visible, important place in an area where we were promised by the developers walkable, mixed-use retail. I'm sorry, you know, we can call this mixed-use, but heck of a mixed-use to the residents there. It is not part of that dream that was hard-fought for by the residents and a compromise, frankly, by the community.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to ask a question. Under the MUS, what are the sign, what would they be allowed in terms of signs? What I'm really asking about is electronic sign. Is that allowed there?
We have a condition for one freestanding sign to be located along Stratford Road with a monument-type, six-foot-high, maximum 36-square-foot copy area. It does not preclude electronic message boards. If that's something that you're interested in, you may want to ask the developer if they're willing to accept that additional restriction.
My concern is with the electronic signs that are just brightly lit and just don't, you know, don't add to the attraction of the area.
Yeah, I mean, an electronic message board sign is allowed anywhere the freestanding or attached sign is allowed except for areas where they're specifically prohibited, the RS and RM zoning districts. So if it's your desire not to have that again, I believe if you wanted to make that a condition of approval, you could, but you may want to check with the developer to see whether or not that is satisfactory to them to add that as a condition. Because once it, ultimately, once it gets to the city council level, they have to agree to that to be added as a condition, or I guess if it's a contentious enough issue, the city council could deny the rezoning request if they don't agree to the condition. So...
I'm seeing a thumbs up from the petitioner on this revised condition.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I agree with Mr. Bryan about the concern about this not developing in the way that it was intended to. But I'm also concerned about the 15 years that it sat unused. And I'd like to see some of the other parcels to be developed, you know, in here, but as they get developed, be developed more of a neighborhood-serving way.
I don't want to say too much. It's a little premature, but we do have a restaurant user that's looking at Hillcrest. I think they're looking closer to the main entrance drive, and that may come to fruition. That may be something that you see here in the coming months.
And I don't, I mean, and I certainly agree with what's been stated. One of the issues, if you can look at it, you know, right adjacent just to the south, there's already an underperforming retail center that, you know, has a hard time maintaining tenants that they have. Again, we are 14 or 15 years down the road. So I certainly agree with what you're saying.
Well, I think that you have to respond to what the market has told you your property can be developed for. So regardless of the grandeur of the plan or the grand community compromise, you still have to respond to economic reality.
I agree. Okay, but the request to make the conditional of the sign, you know, okay with that, all right? With that one revision, we have a motion for approval, those in favor? Any opposed? Mr. Bryan opposed. Okay.
All right. Next item is Item B3, zoning docket W-3382. And this is a request to rezone, I think it's about 4,000 square feet, from RS7 to pedestrian business, limited-use zoning. And you can see the subject property there in yellow at the southwest corner of West Street and Green Street in the West Salem neighborhood. You can see the surrounding zoning pattern is primarily RS7 with some individual lots zoned RSQ and RSQS. If you've been by, if you've been by the site, you know there's an existing non-residential building on the site that was built before zoning. And this request, again, would rezone the site to pedestrian business, limited use. In looking at the area plan, the area plan does recommend office use for the subject property. The subject property does include offices as one of the uses. It also includes a variety of low-intensity commercial uses in addition to. While the use is not wholly office going forward, staff is supportive of this PBL request and hopes for revitalization of this corner site. And staff would recommend approval of this request.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? I declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Lamb. Second. Mr. Bryan, in discussion. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B4, zoning docket W-3383. And this is a request to rezone 1.1 acres from limited industrial, special-use zoning to limited industrial, limited-use zoning. And you can see the site there on the west side of Thomasville Road, just south of Reed Street, and even further to the north would be I-40. It contains an about an existing 8,000-square-foot industrial building. And really, the intent of this request is to add the uses manufacturing A and building contractor general to the existing list of uses. Staff felt that both of those were reasonable additions, and in looking at the area plan, the area plan does recommend industrial zoning for the subject property. So with that, staff does recommend approval of this limited-use request.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? I declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Lamb. Second. Mr. Leake, in discussion. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B5, zoning docket W-3384. And this is a request to rezone about three-quarters of an acre from RS9 to RS9 limited-use zoning. And you can see the subject property there in yellow on the east side of Petrie Road. This is just northwest of Mount Tabor High School. Mount Tabor would just be out of the picture to the bottom of this image. This is adjacent to the Thornhill neighborhood on Petrie Road, and that was a PRD that was approved back in the 80s through RS9S zoning. The homeowner association has purchased this lot, and the intent of their purchase was to protect their entrance and make sure it's an attractive entrance to their subdivision. Going through the zoning process, they, as you read through the conditions, no building shall be built on the property. It's got to be labeled as common area, and it's got to be combined with the existing common area, and no driveway cuts onto Petrie Road. In speaking with the applicant, the neighborhood wanted to go through this additional level of protection to make sure that as future homeowner association changes, this property just couldn't be sold as a buildable lot. They wanted the extra protection of the zoning layered on top of that. So that's what this is. And with that, staff is supportive of this RS9L request.
Okay. Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? I declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Lamb. Second. Mr. Grubbs, in discussion. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is C1. This is subdivision 2018-082. And this is for about 13 acres located south of Monticello Drive, east of Silas Creek Parkway, and directly adjacent to the Sika property. And you can see the subject property there in yellow. It's currently zoned IP with one lot that's zoned RS12. Sika to the east is currently zoned IP. And again, this is for a 29-lot conventional subdivision. And we'll walk through the site plan a little bit here. To get you oriented, Monticello Drive is up to the top of this image. Wesleyan Drive is to the left-hand side, and then Silas Creek Parkway would just be out of this image to the left, and then Sika would be directly to the right of the subject property. So again, as I mentioned, this is a conventional subdivision with public streets. So there would be a new public street that would come south off of Monticello Drive and come in this C-shaped, curvilinear pattern here to serve the 29 new lots. 29 lots, one lot making use of the existing gardener's cottage, which is located in this area here. Stormwater was an issue on this. As we reviewed it, we wanted to take care because this is a sensitive location. So two stormwater control devices, one up in the northwest corner of the property, one in the southwest corner of the property. Stormwater will be piped through the, in between these two lots, into the collection device, and then an outlet going out of the corner of the property to Wesleyan Drive. Down here to the south, you can see the pipe going into the pond, and then outlet structure outletting directly into this tributary of Silas Creek. Additional care given to the residents, the existing homeowners along the border of this property. I know it's difficult to see on a site plan of this scale, but there's a diversion ditch shown on the site plan that runs along the back of those lots. I think it's lots four through about nine. And so what that diversion ditch is intended to do is to catch the runoff that comes off of those lots and take that runoff directly into either of the two ponds. And that would keep that runoff from going on to those existing homes. So when you look at it, the runoff that these folks experience should really be everything between, should only be the distance between that diversion ditch and the property line. So that was an addition that stormwater staff advocated for to provide an additional level of protection to those residents. As you'll see in the stormwater conditions, our stormwater staff has advocated for a beefed-up stormwater condition that goes above and beyond the typical measures that we bring to you. Developers agree to that, and that's included in this request. Buffer yards would be provided along the northern property line and the western property line because IP zoning adjacent to RS12 does require a buffer, even though it's the same land use, single-family to single-family, and that's shown on the site plan. So with that, again, this is a conventional subdivision. We're not looking at required open space or things of that nature. All of the lots are 10,000 square feet in size, and the subject request does meet UDO requirements. So staff does recommend approval of this request.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Lamb. Second. Mr. Grubbs, in discussion.
Yes.
I just had a technical question about how you calculate the lot size, how you get to the 10,000 square feet being allowed in the IP. What is about IP that would allow that? Because some of that's RS12.
The bulk of the property, so everything south of that one platted lot is IP. So when you go to the district standards for IP, it lists the minimum lot size as 10,000 square feet. So that's whether you're doing single-family, church, daycare, school, minimum lot size is 10,000 square feet, and it's a minimum width. And that's what these, the standard that these lots were held to.
Okay. Thanks.
You mentioned the diversion ditch here, and I've been concerned about what are flowing across other people. So this was a voluntary sort of agreement between the developer and stormwater sort of talking it through, or?
I think so. I mean, there's definitely a recognition of wanting to not adversely impact those homes. And so that was one measure that our stormwater staff identified to help the situation, and the developer was agreeable to it.
And it, and it works in with the development? I mean, it's going to look good as well as be functional and?
That's the intent. We can invite the developer up here if you'd like further clarification.
No, I mean, if you've looked at it, I'm satisfied. But I'm real pleased to hear folks looking at that because, I mean, when we do see stormwater come up and it just runs over like going on to Town Country right now.
Well, our staff and stormwater staff and even the development community is certainly more cognizant of the high level of awareness of stormwater impacts. So that's, that's being addressed thoroughly.
And, you know, it's one of those, it's a ditch and name owner. I'm sure it's a grass conveyance. It'll be, I mean, it has to be seeded and stabilized and those kind of things. So it won't be, I mean, again, there may be some areas we'll have to have rip route for dissipation for velocity, but for the most part, I would assume it's going to be a grass conveyance.
Good. Any other comments? A motion for approval, those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is C2, subdivision 2018-083. And this is for about 10 acres on the south side of Yadkinville Road. This is directly across from the cemetery and just west of the Greenbrier Farm neighborhood. And you can see the subject property there in yellow. Again, this is 19 lots. It's not a PRD. It's a conventional subdivision, fairly standard design, one new public road that would come in and be, and have lots basically on either side of it and out into the cul-de-sac. Lot 19, which is included in this request, is really a reflection of the existing lot that's there. There's no changes proposed to that lot. So really, 18 new lots here with one new public street serving that site. Again, standard subdivision. The lots meet 65 feet and 65-foot width requirement and 9,000 square foot in size. So staff recommends approval of this request.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Lamb. Second. Mr. Grubbs, in discussion. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to Section D of the agenda, which is we're going to have a public hearing on the East End master plan. And I will turn it over to Margaret Bissett, who is going to do a little bit of this. And then we will hear, hear from the CDC that actually put forth the RFP to bring in the consultant to do the plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Margaret.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members. Today, we're asking for your endorsement of the East End master plan. Actually, I'm going to be tag-teaming with Carol Davis, who is the executive director of the SG Adkins CDC. Carol will talk about the context and sort of the community-based process that developed the plan. And then I'll really focus on the land use. I'll give you some comparison to the east, to the east-northeast plan. And then Carol will wrap it up. So let me say there is, we have a slideshow for you. This slideshow is based on the consultant's slideshow for the community meeting in August with a few adaptations by Marco Andrade, who was really planning's primary person through this process. Marco is out of the country right now, so you get me as your fill-in. The slides have a lot of information on them. Carol and I are just giving you an overview today, so we won't cover all the information on the slides, but we can certainly come back to things if you're particularly interested. So let me turn it over to Carol.
My name's Carol Davis. I'm executive director of the Simon Green Adkins Community Development Corporation. I am here on behalf of the CDC, and I also represent Winston-Salem State University. As Margaret mentioned, we had the pleasure of working closely with the city of Winston-Salem, mostly Councilman Derwin Montgomery in the planning department, and consultants from Baltimore, Maryland called Air St. Gross, who we met through the Wake Forest Innovation Quarter. I believe Air St. Gross did some work for the Wake Forest Innovation Quarter. And we met them because we were looking for answers to the questions that the community was asking about. How can the East Ward benefit from all of the development and activity and investment going on in downtown in the Wake Forest Innovation Quarter? How can we see some of that investment come into East Winston-Salem? What kind of strategy do we need? And so those questions were the real reason why we started this process. As you can see on the slide, the East End is really just a portion of East Ward. So we really only had detailed conversation about this portion of East End between 52 and Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, and from the north, Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, and to the south, Winston-Salem State University. So that very specific area is what we focused on in our conversations with the community and with the planners. As Margaret mentioned, we did have a process that involved many focus group meetings, very, very many community meetings. We invited all of the financial institutions, all of the educational institutions in town. We worked with, we invited all the residents of the apartments and the single-family homes. We invited the county commissioners, had conversations with county commissioners, nonprofit organizations, United Way and others. And we just tried to be as comprehensive as possible, reaching everyone to make sure we had their feedback and input as we went through this process. So we had the initial meeting in 2016, which realized the need for a more robust, comprehensive neighborhood plan. And then throughout 2017, we followed up with three visits from the consultant, usually two-day visits. That included interaction with all of the parties that I've named. First in March of 2017, June, and then in October. And then the final presentation was just in August of 2018. So with that, we feel like we got a good amount of input. We got some good ideas. We feel like they were thoroughly vetted and that tried to be responsive to the main concerns of the community. I assume this is the time I should mention that one of our main goals was to make sure we did not displace the residents who are currently in the neighborhood, the people who, who want to remain in the community, who have been part of the community. The main concern they have is that we would bring in this investment and make all these beautiful changes, and then they would not be able to stay, wouldn't be able to afford to stay, wouldn't have a place. So a lot of our time was spent thinking about that issue of displacement and making sure that we could address that. One of the strategies is to increase the density. Margaret will talk about that when she gets to the slides. But one of the things we're very cognizant is of, is looking at the number of affordable units that are currently in the East End, looking at those apartment multifamily buildings as well as the single-family homes that, where we envision having single-family infill, and making sure that we preserve that number of units. Most of the multifamily units are going to be, are going to stay right where they are. You probably know the Southgate Apartments is already planning an extensive renovation of their property. The Ivy Arms Apartments aren't going anywhere. The Holland Homes Apartments are not going anywhere. The main opportunity within this East End region for really increasing the density of affordable homes is with the Garden Court, Garden Terrace Apartments that are now partially controlled by a church in this area that was part of our planning process. So as I mentioned, displacement was on our minds. We're going to have a, ensure that there's a mix of housing price points when we, as we move along toward implementation, and try to address the needs of the current community as well as people that we're trying to attract. How far do you want me to go?
I think you probably just want to go quickly over those.
Which ones?
20212.
So we wanted to mitigate 52 as a barrier, obviously. We wanted to talk about transportation options and ways that people can be connected to jobs and opportunities. We wanted to create more indoor and outdoor public spaces in parks. You'll see that on the plans. Specifically, attention was paid to the design of the roadways to include chopping up some of the superblocks so that they could be more pedestrian-friendly, easier for mobility and getting around in the community. Have I passed it? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This doesn't have page numbers on it.
It's confusing.
I know, but this is one of my favorite pictures. Can we leave it here for a second? Which page is that?
Uh, it is...
As you can see, sure, as you can see, the northern part of this planning area is primarily institutional, because that's where the county buildings are. There's also some shopping currently, the East Winston Shopping Center, the Winston Mutual Building, and some other, some empty buildings, empty commercial buildings. And then right in the middle, that kind of evenly splits this planning area, is Fifth Street, and the framework for redevelopment includes making Fifth Street a mixed-use connector with retail, commercial, and residential mixed-use buildings, multi-story. So the top, the northern part of that, the uses would mostly remain the same, and the southern part of that area, those uses would remain the same, but we would, of course, redevelop the residential housing, including some low-density, single-family home ownership opportunities, and the commercial along Martin Luther King, making that a more robust commercial corridor.
So to talk to you a bit about the land use. We've had a number of plans that have been done for this area. Carol mentioned the Wake Forest Innovation Quarter had a master plan, not really for this area, but adjacent to this area. A number of other plans, the corridor plan connected with the creative corridors for the MLK corridor, and also you all previously endorsed the Cleveland Avenue Neighborhood Master Plan. Probably, though, the plan that has the most impact on you all is the East-Northeast Area Plan that was adopted in 2015. You can see this, the area of the East End is this very lower southwestern corner of the, of the area plan. Kind of key recommendations from the area plan for the, what we call this, the East Winston Activity Center, is that it, we have some concentrated redevelopment, that it be a mixed-use area, that we provide more retail and service in the neighborhood, and that it be walkable and pedestrian-friendly. And you're going to see that those ideas were brought forward in this new East End plan. You can look here and see kind of specifically what this, what the Activity Center recommendations were for this area. There was some, some of our conceptual drawings specifically for the 3rd to 5th Street area and for MLK. So as I say, the, what the consultant did, worked with the community, and I think that, to me, that's what is kind of distinguishes this particular East End plan from other planning efforts done in the area, is this intense level of community involvement. So they took that community involvement, they took the plans that had been done for the area, including the East, the East-Northeast Plan, and synthesized it for this neighborhood vision. This slide, the framework slide, I think this is the key slide, the key map in the plan. It shows you some of the primary recommendations that are included in this plan. As Carol mentioned, Fifth Street is, is to be redeveloped as a walkable, mixed-use Main Street for this area. There's a central hub right here in the center in that darker blue, really anchors the area to have a space for civic, education, and other community-based uses. The area along Martin Luther King, that's now retail, would be, would continue as retail, but would be reconfigured. One of the interesting things that they're proposing is this area here, kind of along the southern part of MLK, retail on the first floor, and housing, potentially student housing, on, on upper floors. Still, that residential, the, the existing single-family area here, shown in brown, would be, would be maintained, but hopefully, units would be renovated, and vacant lots would be infilled. And then over to, to the west, this area, shown in orange, redevelopment and infill for that denser multifamily. I'll talk a little bit later about some of the new parks, and of course, Carol mentioned this area up in here, the Forsyth County Campus. This is an illustrative master plan. There's a lot of conceptual drawings in the plan. It's really, I hope you got a chance to look at it. It's quite a beautiful plan. I think what to me is most important is, is that this, the drawings are done to show potential, but with a prioritization on people and that sense of community in this area. It really proposes to use land more efficiently with more compact and denser development, and then assuring that the, the area is connected and that there's an open space network, that I'll talk about in a minute, to make it walkable, accessible, and safe. This is another one of, I think, one of the really interesting sketches of the area. It shows an overview of the vision of the area and all those components that I have, that I've mentioned. Let me talk briefly about some of the master plan components. Again, very detailed plan, I'm just going to quickly go over these. There are recommendations in the plan for use, density, scale, and height to achieve the vision in the recommendations. There's a street network proposed, including a couple of, of connections, new connections of streets that probably existed, connected before, but during activities over the last 30 to 40 years, closed those streets. There's some proposal to reconnect those, you know, to better connect the community. One of the most exciting things, as Carol had mentioned, is this concept of Fifth Street as a new Main Street, and it even gives some, a potential configuration of that street, and a nice sketch of what a new Main Street in the area with buildings pulled up to the street and active uses could look like. There's, of course, also a bike, transit, and pedestrian network to give people a range of transportation options. And I think one of the really exciting things in this plan is this open space network. Let me kind of walk you through a little bit of it. We have that new civic hub, that community anchor, connected to the new neighborhood park, also connected down a, a street or greenway to this new linear park that serves as not just a, a park and a trail, but a buffer, buffering the neighborhood from US-52 and Business 40. Very exciting. Let me talk quickly about implementation. This plan recognizes there's a lot of very bold recommendations, and that it's going to require a collective effort and a wide range of financing to make this happen. Let me point out here, this, this is sort of a, kind of a master plan summary here. It gives you the residential, the number of units, the, for both single or residential and square footage for non-residential. Give you a little bit of idea on this plan, and again, it's just conceptual, is proposing about 150 new single-family units and about, resulting about 1,100 multifamily units. And many of those would be from either renovation of existing or building of new. Right now, there's only about 400 multifamily units, so a lot of new units in this area. One of the really interesting things that the consultant is proposing is what's called a build-first strategy. So you build new units first, move people who, who live in the area to those units so they're not displaced, so they have a new place to live, they can stay in the area, benefit from all the reinvigoration of the area, and not have to be moved out. So that's, it's denser, but also a build-first strategy, which I thought was a very creative way of, of assuring that the people who live in the neighborhood could stay in the neighborhood. We've done some, I don't know if you're familiar, we've done some, the Housing Authority has done some Hope Six redevelopments. Many times, people have been moved out of the neighborhood and don't end up moving back in. This proposes that people be relocated within the neighborhood, not out of the neighborhood. So I think a real exciting strategy. Another interesting thing about the plan is it includes 16 catalyst projects. Those are projects that they see as, as potential to be key in kind of getting the ball rolling and, and getting, kind of attracting redevelopment to the area. These are grouped in three categories. The first one is residential, how we're going to get those 150 units and all those new multifamily units, using that build-first strategy. Also, economic development, some, one of the things that is proposed for this area, this number, this letter eight here, this is the enterprise zone. It's the idea that we want to create not just new businesses for the area, but new economic opportunities for people who live in the area. And then there are open space recommendations, open space and circulation, so to, to provide connections for people within the neighborhood and to help connect them externally to the research park, the downtown, and to Winston-Salem State. So this final slide that I wanted to show you is a plan comparison, comparing on, let's see, on, well, the, the more colorful one is the East End Plan and then the East-Northeast Plan, trying to, basically comparing those so you see what the, the differences are. To highlight, I think the main differences are that the East End Plan focuses the mixed use on Fifth Street and along MLK, including that student housing area. I think that's a difference in the plan. I think, though, in general, the plan is really, they have the same goals, which is a revitalized neighborhood, mixed use, mixed income, and connected for the people who live there. So we recommend, planning staff recommends your endorsement of the plan, and I think Carol's going to wrap up.
I have invited some stakeholders in the community to, to come today, Virginia Hardesty and Bernard Foye, and our board member, Alan Younger, so I'll be brief about next steps. I think Margaret covered the action requested, which is your endorsement and recommendation. We'll be moving to a recommendation by a city council committee and consideration by the city council, and as a CDC, we're going to continue to engage the stakeholders as we move into implementation. We think that the Union Station building, the $18 million investment there, is something huge that we can leverage for the rest of the neighborhood. We want to move forward using this as a guide as we seek resources and partners for the implementation, and also use, use this as a guide for future zoning and development review decisions. So if I may, I'd like to invite Virginia Hardesty to come forward, and Alan Younger, and Bernard Foye.
This is a public hearing, and we do have 12 minutes for each side to make presentations. Mr. Hardesty?
It won't take that long. Good afternoon. I'm Virginia Hardesty, the owner of Forsyth Seafood Market and Grill. We're located at 108 North Martin Luther King Drive. We were on Liberty Street back in 84 when we started, came to Martin Luther King in 91, and we've been there since. So we did have a location on Broad Street. Our focus right now is in East End, east side of Winston. We have had opportunity to invest twice in that area. Secondly, kind of prodded a little bit by Department of Transportation, but, but we're glad to be in the neighborhood. I always say we have the best customers in the world. I believe that the customers in East Winston deserve to have services and products available to them in their neighborhood, to have opportunities for jobs. We have roughly 24 part-time and full-time employees, a lot living right in, walking distance and close to the neighborhood. I think that as Winston State grows, and we have students up and down, obviously, it's a big part of our customer base, and we partner with them, have a lot of activity going on. There need to be other kind of businesses there that the community can go to. They don't have to get in a car and go on the west side to buy certain things. They should have recreational areas, they should have, you know, to be able to work, play, and whatever they choose to do in the area. So we're, we're obviously a big supporter of that, we're supporter of the master plan. It did have a lot of input. I think that in most cases, people do get nervous when there's a lot of change because of regionification and things that have happened in other areas, but I think this plan has really gone beyond to ensure that people are included and they're able to give their input. And I think the more businesses you have, it just brings more people to the area. I think that, that we, many times, we look and we see a lot of activities going on downtown and say, how does East Winston play into that? So I think, you know, the city has done a great job. We have a lot of new facilities starting to pop up, but I think this would connect it, having a plan and a vision, because, you know, you don't have a plan, you become lost. So I think this is a framework. It's probably not a perfect framework, but it's a good starting point, I think, to establish some developers to come in and look at and see what the potential is for East Winston. So I'm in support of the plan.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person to sign up is Michael Banner.
Good evening.
Um, I wasn't necessarily invited, I was actually intercepted. I was dropping off a drawing for a lot for urban farm ordinance.
Excuse me, sir, we need your address for the record.
515 North Jackson Avenue. And, um, I was drawing a site plan for one of these abandoned spaces for an ordinance that was passed by y'all. And, um, I saw Alan Younger when I was coming in here, and he was telling me about what was going on, so I ran up here. But, um, I actually just had conversations with several of these great people right here in regards of developing East Winston. So I think it's very organic what's happening right now with this master plan development. They've laid out the scaffold, and I would encourage community members not to be too skeptical, but look at the opportunity in it, because just as myself, if you're laid out in a dry parched land with not a lot of, of water prevalent there, you might be very discouraged in regards to growing food. I did say that the best I could, but, um, what I'm saying is, I think the more that they prevail, opportunities to us through the small business center, through booming restaurant, through a great CDC, I think that will eventually stoke the interest into this plan, and we'll be able to do great things out of this plan. So thank you for your time, and look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Foye?
I'm Bernard Foye, I'm 124 Mayfair Drive and 27105. I'm also a resident and strong supporter of the plan. I'm with, actually with Holland Homes, and we, a few years ago, did an expansion, or we did a rehabilitation, and we're looking, actually, at this point, to do an expansion, mainly because we do have a growing and pretty stable, but growing waiting list of people who, and, and we service mainly seniors with affordable housing, and we're looking to expand so that we can accommodate some of our waiting list, but also, as a native, I grew up in East Winston, and I've seen the, the opportunity now that is actually in that area to start bringing some of the, the traffic that is starting to build, mostly in, in around the Innovation Quarter, over into that area, and I feel like if we can take advantage of this opportunity, it can only benefit the entire community. So I'm, I'm in strong support of it.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Younger?
I hope we're out of time. I don't...
Hi, everybody. I'm Alan Younger. My address is 5500 Stone Crossing Drive, Winston-Salem, 27104, and I am definitely in support of this plan. You know, some of the things I want to say is, this is what we're looking for. This is the type of community engagement that we want. This is the type of mixed-use development that we want, and I can't think of a reason why we would not endorse this. It involves community investment, there are going to be parks and greenways, and all kinds of great development that Winston-Salem, East Winston has been waiting for. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That's more succinct than you normally...
Now I declare the public hearing closed. We have in our packet a resolution of support for this, to endorse this plan, and so that's what we're asked to do today is to adopt this resolution.
And if I could just clarify, generally speaking, whenever there's a plan that's done by an outside group, what the planning board generally does is an endorsement. They, it's generally an adoption whenever it's a staff-driven plan. I believe you've heard the public outreach and the efforts that have been, that have gone into it. We've analyzed it. We think, you know, while there are some differences, what we would ask you to do today is, if you're so inclined, would be to endorse it. As development projects would come through the development review process for rezoning, we would analyze both the East Northeast Area Plan and the East End Master Plan and provide you with the recommendations that the respective plans talk about and make our recommendation based on what we feel like is the best fit, given those, trying to intermingle those two. Like I said, there's a lot of overlap, but there are some differences. But what we would do is, if this is endorsed and ultimately adopted by council, we would provide information to you on both plans.
Very good.
Is it appropriate to ask questions beforehand or after the resolution?
No, you, yeah. Well, you know, there are a couple of things. I'm real excited about this. I mean, I think it's great and I love the involvement with this. And I know that as a group, you all probably thought through these things already, but I hope as we move it over to city council, we think about a couple of things. One is that Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Drive needs to be developed on both sides, and it's your thoroughfare, and I hope somebody's doing that simultaneous development on the other side of that so it becomes a, the distinguished thoroughfare that is put forward in here. The other thing is, I think 52 needs to be just as developed. I'm disappointed in the rendering, as it, as the rendering still shows it as such a dividing line. I'm not seeing the bridges developed as inviting and as wanting to walk across the bridges from Innovative Quarters to the East End and vice versa. And I think there needs to be a commitment from Innovative Quarters on the other side of 52 of what's going to be there that's going to connect over to make this successful. And they need to commit to this project, just as you all have done with all your thinking along the way. And I hope that, I hope that the city council looks at that. The last thing is that I've been very discouraged by the definition of affordable housing. When you looked at the demographics of this and said that the average income of many of the residents there was $15,000, affordable housing is often out of the reach of $15,000 incomes. And I know you all have put a lot of effort into that, and I just don't want to see another project that comes across where it really does displace people simply because, and everybody's going around talking about affordable housing, but it's not really affordable for the people that are currently living there. And we've got to have a commitment to that. And I still feel that the city council has not come up with a comprehensive plan on affordable housing, and that's what needs to be hand-in-hand with what you're doing right now so that we can assure that not only in the East End, but throughout Winston-Salem. Thanks, sir.
I had a couple of questions. One was about the overlay, which I think is a big portion of MLK here. Is that, is the intent to keep those requirements in place regarding buildings?
We have not discussed that on a, like a lot-by-lot basis, but in general, this plan recommends buildings pulled up to the front and backloaded parking. So in general, I, there's not a conflict. As a matter of fact, if you look at like what we did in the East Northeast Plan, this is more, this plan has more of that sort of urban, you know, pull it up on the street, prioritize the pedestrian. So I think it's going to fit in well with MLK overlay, but I, we have not looked at it on a lot-by-lot basis.
Okay. And then my other question had to do, we were talking about the catalyst projects and was wondering if you had thought about having one of them be a grocery store? Because, you know, you do have retail, but like we saw with one of the cases today, sometimes retail is not neighborhood-serving, and having a proactive approach to getting a grocery store in there might be helpful.
Carol, do you know, is that something that was discussed? Did you want to?
So you are right that a grocery store is something that people get most excited about in conversation with the residents in the area. And there've been talks about a potential grocery store in two places. One would be, of course, in the retail center on Martin Luther King, and the other spot was proposed to put one near United Metropolitan Church where there currently is a big parking lot with the thought that a grocery store close to 52 could potentially draw people from north, south, east, and west and be a magnet for people to come from all directions. So there have been conversations. A couple of stores in particular have been talked to. No commitments yet.
Carol, I have a question. How do you continue to get the consent of the neighbors there? You know, going back to what George said with affordable housing? How do you continue to engage with the neighbors so that they don't feel like they're going to be displaced and we keep housing affordable? I understand the buildup process where, you know, you build, put someone in, but does that work in reality?
Yes, and I think, well, if you notice, the majority of the multifamily housing that's there now, Holland Homes, South Gate, and Ivy Arms are staying just as they are. The main residential multifamily development there now that can be largely redeveloped is the one just south of the Main Street in the orange there, just south of Main Street. What we're doing is continuing the stakeholder meetings on a quarterly basis. We do have a website with information on it that has been getting more and more hits. We have social media campaign going, and we are doing homebuyer education. The city has made available a revolving construction loan for single-family new construction with home dollars. And home dollars are for people who make 50% or below of area median income. And that's, I think that meets the definition of affordable. The tricky part is the credit. You've got to have a credit score to go with it. If they have a decent credit score, the home funds are subsidizing purchase of single-family homes. You can also do multifamily with home funds. And also, there are the low-income housing tax credit tools that are available for people with incomes below 80% of area median income. So we are having ongoing meetings throughout May, June, July. We had almost weekly meetings at the Nelson Malloy Heritage Library about credit, sponsored with BB&amp;T, conversations about, you know, how, if you're interested in homeownership, how might you prepare yourself? So we are continuing to stay engaged and have future meetings planned, want to keep the dialogue going.
All right.
Do you have just another moment?
Sure.
The funding mechanisms, that's something I'm really interested in. I'm really interested to see what's the magnitude of what has, you know, what has to occur. You've got about 400 residents that need to be put into new properties or new homes under this, is it called Build First? Is that what we said, or First Build, Build First? Is that, are most of those homeowners that will sell homes and then move to homes, or most are?
Well...
I'm interested in the funding mechanism and how, you know, how do we, how does it get funded?
Mm-hmm.
I guess is what I'm interested in.
Well, we'll be relying on developers.
Okay.
Who can partner with us and use incentives. You know, ideas such as having a community land trust have been talked about, where the public maintains ownership of the property and the developer just owns the buildings. And this is, it is also an opportunity zone, which is a new form of tax credit for wealthy people who have capital gains money that they want to invest and withdraw later tax-free. So we're going to be looking into all those opportunities for funding.
And if I could, a secondary component that will come to you, if this is endorsed and ultimately adopted by council, a secondary action that will come to you, I believe at your work session in October, or maybe it's, maybe it's your regular meeting in October and then go to city council following that, would be a change to the legacy 2030 Growth Management Plan to incorporate the part of this area encompassed by the East End Master Plan, the part south of Fifth Street is currently located in GMA 1, which is in, city code defines Central Business District. There will be a piece that comes in to ask you to include the area north of Fifth Street in a GMA 1. And one of the reasons for that is, under the city code definition of Central Business District, it ties into some North Carolina general statute provisions where the city can expend funds for development projects. So that would be, you know, perhaps another funding mechanism, probably not for the units themselves, but for infrastructure improvements, parking decks, if any are needed, those kind of things. So that would be a secondary component that would come to you following adoption, if this is adopted by council.
Also, Clarence, so back to your funding question and other staff, correct me if I'm wrong, I think on the November bond package, there's either two or two and a half million dollars slated for Fifth Street improvements.
Mm-hmm.
For the streetscape, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah. Which goes Fifth Street going up how far?
I don't know exactly. I would assume from MLK to 52, but I do not know exactly.
Any other questions, any board members, comments? We need a motion to adopt the resolution to endorse the plan.
I make a motion that we adopt the resolution for the East End Master Plan.
Second motion, Mr. Leake. Second, Mr. Lamb. Any further discussion? Opposed in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item is under E5, and this will be a presentation that will be given to you by North Carolina Department of Transportation related to the Business 40 Project. I'm going to let Margaret Bissett do the introductions of our representatives here for NCDOT and, I believe, a consultant.
Yeah, I was glad to do it.
We have a very exciting presentation on the impending Business 40 improvements. Karen Simon with Simon Resources and me, Mazak Tucker with NCDOT, are going to do the presentation. And I'd also like to recognize that our transportation director, Tanique McCullough, is also here. So if you have questions, she's here. So Karen?
Appreciate you having us here, and it's just a small little project I want to talk about in our backyard. We have been working and planning for this project. Yes, sir.
Need name and address for the...
Oh, for my, okay. Karen Simon, 3946 Ton Bridge Lane, Winston-Salem, 27106.
Thank you.
So we have been planning for this project since 2006, and it is finally here. It is under construction. And we want to talk to you about what is going on currently with the Peters Creek Parkway and some ancillary construction. What is coming up very soon, and as many of you probably heard, the actual closure of Business 40 between Peters Creek Parkway and US 52 will happen, yes, it is happening, this November. And so we'll also give you an update of all the construction work, but we want to talk a little bit about some of the mitigation efforts and some of the other tasks that we're doing to prepare for the closure. And so with that, I will turn it over to Mazak Tucker of NCDOT, and he is a resident engineer on this project.
Good evening. As Karen said, my name's Mazak Tucker. I'm the resident engineer on the project, and of course, my address is 440 Persimmon Lane in Salisbury, North Carolina. Basically, on, currently on the project, well, let me step back to this slide here. The project was awarded to Flatiron Constructors and Flight Development Incorporated. Basically, it's a 1.2-mile section of Business 40 that extends from just the east side of, just the west side of 52 to the east side of Peters Creek Parkway. Project came in at $99.2 million. That number is rapidly growing. We have recently negotiated a supplemental agreement to facilitate some acceleration efforts to deliver it early with some incentives along with that. The project, in the end, will increase the speed limit from 45 to 55, which I know folks currently travel that thing about 65 probably. In the end, it'll be renamed US 421 Business 40 to Salem Parkway. The design-build timeline, this current timeline, we're currently in Segment 5 there. We think we will, we will move to Segment 6 shortly, which is the closure of Business And this slide shows you the construction segments, A through D. I'll go into a little detail on each segment. Currently, we're in Segment A, which we started last fall, 2017. We will complete this fall in November. Basically, it involved reconstructing the Peters Creek Parkway interchange. We're currently in the process of reconstructing Fourth Street Bridge. Currently, we're working on the north and south side Business 40 retaining walls for those abutments for that new bridge. We have completed the first phase of the Peters Creek Parkway Bridge to the west. We switched traffic to that. We completed the first phase of the pedestrian tunnel, which is located right, right here, crosses under Peters Creek Parkway to the Ball Field. We're currently working on the second phase of the bridge, and we have completed some temporary new alignments for the ramps and loops that will connect Business 40 to Peters Creek Parkway. We are wrapping up realigning Apple and Gregory Street to accommodate the new ramp and loop to the southeast quadrant of the interchange. That's kind of where we're at. In the next two to three weeks, we'll be setting beams on the second phase of Peters Creek Parkway. And I, when we originally constructed the first phase, it was around six weeks that we had traffic switched to that bridge once we set beams. So I anticipate within six weeks of setting those beams, we'll have the Peters Creek Parkway Bridge completed. So we're looking at, once we, once we complete Peters Creek Parkway interchange with all the lanes of traffic open, it will be three lanes in each direction. We will close Business 40, and that will happen this November. So once we close, we'll move into Segments B and C, which was the roadway closure from just east of Peters Creek Parkway to just west of US 52, where we'll reconstruct all the bridges through the corridor, along with a new Strowway Bridge. The reason why this, this has broke apart in two segments is because the Segment C bridges will be constructed first, and that's to maintain the two one-way pairs in and out of downtown. So we'll construct Church, Main, and Liberty first before we close Cherry and Marshall. One thing to note on this slide as well is that we have, as part of the acceleration package, we have moved Broad Street to Segment C, which is the first segment in the closure period. And what that's going to do is allow us to deliver that bridge earlier to allow more access in and out of downtown, and we're trying to construct that bridge outside of ball season as well as not having Brookstown Avenue closed at the same time as Broad because of the Dallas Center located right off Brookstown. right off Brookstown. So in coordination, you know, we, we had a lot of, a lot of people concerned about the closure of Broad and Brookstown at the same time. So we evaluated that and was able to develop a plan with the contractor to move that bridge into the schedule. So once we close Business 40, like I say, we will start bridges Church, Main, and Liberty. We'll complete from US 52 back to Main Street in seven months. So part of that acceleration, these dates on here have not been changed to include our acceleration. So we're looking at finishing back to Main Street in seven months after the closure. So you're looking at late spring, having access back from 52 into downtown via Main Street. Once we complete the Liberty Street and Strowway Bridges and Church Street, we'll move to close the bridges on Segment B portion, which would be Cherry and Marshall, and then the Brookstown. So as part of that acceleration package, we've reduced the overall, the overall time of construction. It was a 21-month closure. We have reduced that from 630 days to 510 days. So we've reduced that significantly. And then each bridge closure, we reduce from 300-day closures to 240-day closures. So some of the current and ongoing construction work, I pretty much went over most of what was going on on Segment A. We do have Broad Street. I had mentioned accelerating that in the schedule. We had originally scheduled to demolish that bridge and reconstruct it starting this weekend. Due to the pending weather, we have moved that work back till next weekend. So we'll start, we'll close Broad Street next week and begin demolition and reconstruction of that. The waterline construction, most of you will be happy to know that we have completed the waterline on First Street. We have a few little odds and ends to wrap up on some of the side streets along Cherry and Liberty, but all the waterline work on First Street has been completed. The new ramps and loops, like I had stated before, are pretty much completed at Peters Creek Parkway. So notification during construction. We, we've been working real close with Simon Resources and our communication folks in Raleigh to try to put out as early notification of all of our closures and, and what's going on with the project, trying to keep everybody up to date. And a lot of that, a lot of that we're doing with stakeholder email notification and distribution of B40 Blast. Karen, Karen and her group, they do a lot of the stakeholder Blast and, and a lot of the interaction with all the stakeholders. We go out and do presentations like this on a weekly basis to, to anybody that really requests one. We've added some additional message boards in the contract to aid in notification of the, of the traveling public. We have partnered, the department has partnered, partnered with Waze to utilize our TMS information and keep that navigational app up to date. And then, of course, we post everything on social media via the website and Twitter, if you use any of those. A lot of, a lot of what we're doing too is, is a significant amount of off-site improvements throughout the downtown area. Each one of these stars represents some sort of intersection improvements, whether it be signal timing changes, additional turn lanes. This next slide will go into a little more detail on what's happening at each one, at First Street and Liberty Street. You know, we're installing some signal modifications and, and lane, lane modifications. Sixth Street at Broad, we're converting the eastbound lane to westbound left turn lane. So we're taking the one lane away to, to allow that additional left movement. We're restriping the southbound lane to two lanes. Sorry. Fifth Street, Broad, restrike westbound lane to dual left turn lanes. And I, I won't redo each one of these, but basically, on most of these, we're, most of them were adding additional left turns and locations. And mo, and all of these are due to the traffic analysis we've done, where we're anticipating a lot more movement at these intersections. This is just some additional improvements on the star slide from previous. So we have, we have currently, you know, this being a design build job, a lot of the work started prior to design being completed. We're, we're finalizing detour routes. We've pretty much completed the detour routing for once the closure hits, and those should be out soon and distributed to everybody. We have a couple of public meetings coming up next, next month, in which we'll be giving out all the detour routes to everyone, whether it be vehicular or pedestrian. Karen and her group worked to create some pocket-sized maps for everybody. And Business 40 detour, all of that will include like I-40, US 52, and Peters Creek Parkway. Your primary detour route's going to be your 52 to I-40 to Peters Creek Parkway to get primarily the direct motors around the work area. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Karen to kind of go through some of the, some of the things we're doing to mitigate incidents and.
Mr. Tucker, could I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
What's the date that Fourth Street Bridge will be done?
January.
So it'll be January, so Peters Creek will actually be done before the Fourth Street Bridge?
Yes, sir.
And when are you, when are you putting the paving down on First Street?
On First Street?
Yeah.
It'll be, right now, we're, I've got the contractor scheduled to go in and do some repairs to, to help out with some of the uneven, unevenness due to the settlement of some of the trenches. The contract requires them to monitor these trenches for a year prior to milling and resurfacing the road due to settlement issues. What we didn't want to do is trench all this waterline in, come in there, mill and resurface, and then all these trenches settle, and then you've got a, a bad riding facility after it's been paved.
So what are you thinking?
So they're required to do it within a year from the last, the last waterline installation was made, which, you know, I, I would venture to say it's going to be probably fall next year.
So wait a minute. It's been ground down, First Street, right, milled down?
I, I think you're talking about from Peters Creek to the west.
Well, Peters Creek to Hawthorne, yeah.
Yes. That's the, that's a city contract.
That's a city contract, so it doesn't, it doesn't have a connection with you guys on that?
No, sir.
Because I mean, it's going to be a detour.
It, it will be, yeah. It's milled now, so I, I would assume to see it'll be repaved in the next week or so.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. It would be done within the next couple of weeks. You probably will see a lot of primary routes being resurfaced in advance of the Business 40 closure, that all of that milling and resurfacing on those primary routes will be completed before November. But the portion there, I think they have four weeks from the time they mill until they resurface.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a question about when, when you finish a segment, like, for example, Segment C, will that be opened when it's finished, or is it going to remain closed?
The, the Business 40 section of Segment C, only, the only portion that would reopen would be from 52 back to Main Street.
Okay. All right. So where the first bridge is.
Right. Basically, to allow 52 traffic to enter downtown via Main Street, the ramps there.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Okay. Karen?
It's a little confusing on the map that says Segment B and Segment C, because those are actually the bridge work. So the entire Business 40 will be shut down during that time. And then the segments are when the bridges are going to be completed.
I see.
So, yeah. And on this little, I just want to back up a little bit. Our public meetings are October 2nd, well, Small Business Forum is October 2nd, and that's what we're having for a lot of the small businesses downtown. And then our two big public meetings are October 9th at BB&amp;T Ballpark and October 16th at Milton Road. So we really are trying to encourage a lot of people to come and attend. And like Mazak said, we will have little pocket-sized detour maps for the bridges itself, and then an overall map that showed just some of the different access points and exits along I-40 and US 52 that people can get off, you know, instead of using Business 40. So as I mentioned before, we are doing a lot, in addition to just the construction work, to prepare for the closure. And one of the big things that we have been working on over the past three or four years is how to manage incidents during the closure, because what happens if there's an accident and it's not quickly cleared? You know, the backup happens very quickly. And now that we're moving people off Business 40, you know, we have about 75,000 vehicles that use Business 40 every day. About half of those go through. So those will be rerouted down to I-40. But if you have an accident on I-40 or on some of the local roads, we've been working with police, fire, EMS, Forsyth County, Winston-Salem Emergency Management, everybody, to implement a quick clearance program. The responders have been trained on this. We are working to get the incident off the road quickly so we can continue traffic. Message boards, those mobile message boards will be placed at exits prior to the incident immediately to get people off. And we're including more safety patrol drivers, if you recall those little State Farm trucks, more drivers, more routes during the closure. We are also staging towing equipment and removal equipment at certain areas that may have higher rates of accidents. And then locally, you know, the city's new signalization system will help out a lot because we can watch on the monitors and make signal changes as needed. So there's been a lot of work in the past three or four years that's gone into this incident management plan. The other thing we have done, NC DOT has contracted with specific tow companies to get to an accident quickly, and they have actually built in incentives. I believe there's a 20-minute period they have to remove, and if they get it done sooner, they get some incentives. So that's been a big benefit to this project. And on Monday, we are meeting with a lot of the emergency folks about this open roads policy that NC DOT is promoting to, just to try to get all different type of organizations to buy into an open roads and more efficient traffic and removal of incidents. In addition to help with some of the downtown events, the city, as you probably know, has adopted a lane and sidewalk closure policy. So there will be fees placed on any organization that has an event in the downtown area that will require a sidewalk or road closure that will impact the Business 40 project. If it's something the contractor's doing, they wouldn't implement a fee, but if it's something like an organization is having a parade or an event that would impede and hurt traffic, then they would be assessed a fee. And this is a fee structure that was provided by the city. Kind of gives you an overview if it's a full street closure versus a lane obstruction. We've also been working very closely with the Winston-Salem Transit Authority and the Piedmont Authority for Regional Transportation, which is part the black and red buses you see. And they have received a grant from the Federal Highway for several million dollars so they can implement some programs to try to encourage people to ride the buses. And these are a list, a couple of their different programs. This is WISTA's proposed programs. They're making some changes to some of their routes, adding park and ride with express bus service, really amping up their guaranteed ride home program, park and rides and so on. And then PART is expanding some of their express routes and providing new service in the western area of Winston-Salem. They're also encouraging employers to get on board. I believe they're getting about 50% subsidy if you, if an employer buys bus passes for their employees, and they're doing subsidies for their van pool program. We always encourage, when we go out and make these presentations, we always encourage employers to consider other options, whether if you can telecommute, if you can provide staggered work hours, especially those in downtown. We don't want everybody coming in to work at the same time and leaving at the same time. So if there's anything that an employer can do from that type of standpoint, we're encouraging it. Also, people maybe bike or walk if you live in the surrounding neighborhoods to the downtown area, just anything to try to lessen the traffic impact. Again, as Mazak alluded to, we do have a website. We're, we're trying really hard to keep that updated. We've had some issues with that, but we're working to make that more real-time. So you'll see a revamp of our website. For those of you who like to tweet, we have a Twitter, hashtag Biz40NC, and Facebook page is coming soon. That just targets a different group of people. Our email is not working currently. We had some issues with that and, but we do have, we will have an email address. Hopefully, it'll be the same one because we've been pushing that one. And we have a recorded phone message now that tells you what's going on with the construction, and that is 336-747-7855. We have been working on outreach, and we have been all over, on foot, email, every type of outreach you could possibly imagine, we have been doing since 2006. So we think a lot of people know about it, but I'm sure there's folks that will, when that first day of closure, will be getting phone calls and say, "I had no idea that this was happening." But we have partnered with Waze. We are working really closely with all the news media, and we are working with the Downtown Partnership and the Chamber and the city. We still want people to come downtown. So we've been making a huge effort to really encourage people, still come downtown. You still need to shop. You know, the small business owners are a little nervous about what's going to happen. I know they're happier now that we've accelerated the project and it's going to be a shorter timeframe, but still, you know, we still continue to work with them hand in hand. And I think with that, this is your Business 40 team. If you have any questions, you can call any one of us. Mazak works 24/7, so his phone is always open. But, and that's it. Any questions?
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Okay. Have staff report?
I do. I'll try to be brief. I have a few items. Just for your October cycle, we received, we had filing deadline this week, we received three rezoning requests and one PBR, Planable Review Item for October. Secondly, just an update, downtown streetscape master plan, the contract was finalized. A company called MIG is the consultant. They're a national corporation. This plan, if you recall, was designed to create a cohesive and intentional design for the downtown area as far as the streetscape. And it's my understanding from staff that the contractor will begin public input sessions like earlier, probably within the next month or two. Question came up last month regarding the UDO code assessment. We did receive the initial draft recommendations report from the consultant by the revised deadline, and we did review the draft, and we've sent our edits back to the consultant. The consultant will be setting up their public input sessions for early October, and the finalized draft report will be coming to you at your October work session. Few other things, just to give you an update on the Community Development Housing and General Government Committee actions on the text amendments that we've recently heard. Even though it was an external text amendment, the committee did want to talk about TROSA, and it went to committee on Tuesday afternoon. and it went to committee on Tuesday afternoon, and it was recommended approval for approval to the full council. Likewise, UDO 283, the multifamily uses, adding the use of residential building multifamily and HB and GO along growth corridors and activity centers was also heard. It was recommended approval. The planning board recommended version was recommended approval to the full council. They did make one minor change. They want to, I guess, allow for separate votes for the HB and GO portions. There was, there were a couple folks, or one person in particular, that was concerned about allowing it in GO. So the committee allowed the HB and GO to be divided out. So that's how it will move forward to full council after October 1st hearing. Two other things, the annual NCAPA conference wrapped up today at lunchtime. It's supposed to go through tomorrow, but it got cut a day short. We had extensive local involvement, leading sessions, doing mobile tours, doing the host committee activities. So my staff did a good job putting that on, even though it was cut short. I think folks, it was here, last year, probably, I think about eight to 10 years ago, and, you know, I'm sure folks have been impressed by everything that's going on downtown, and certainly the planning board has a lot to be happy about as far as what your involvement has been with that. The final thing I have is at your place. You'll note that a copy of the annual report is there. Planning board has already adopted the items that are in that report. This is just the publication of it. If you would, please review that. If you find any mistakes or anything, please let us know via email or phone call, and we will make those corrections. We only published a few at this point, so you could look them over, see if there's anything you wanted to change or tweak. And then once we have that, we'll probably publish a few more and then distribute it, have it on our website, send it out to elected officials, et cetera. The other thing you may want to consider as a planning board is, a lot of times, appointed boards will go and make a report to your respective elected bodies. In this case, it'd be City Council and County Commissioner, so you may want to consider doing that, given the timing, if you do desire to do that. And with the upcoming appointment of a planning director, you might could kill two birds with one stone and introduce the new planning board, excuse me, the new planning director and do this at the same time. But obviously, that's up to the planning board and what you want to do. That's all I have for staff report, but that may be something you want to discuss.
Yeah, we'll let the new planning director do that, so I won't have to get at the issue. Anything else to go to the order? Ms. Smith?
Right, motion to adjourn.
All right, everyone. We're adjourned.
Wake Forest is losing.